Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and get started for our six o'clock start time. We do have a floor, and so we'll call this meeting to order. If I could have everyone stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Spencer, did you give our invitation enough?
Sure, that's right. Father, we're so thankful and so blessed to have such a beautiful day. We thank you from the very beginning of it up to this point for the blessing that you've given as individual and collectively as counted as a state. The Father, we come tonight concerned for the benefit, the well-being of our children, of our teachers, of our staff, of our administrators. Of this learning environment, we pray that as we come together as board members and executives, that you will lead us in wisdom, in guidance, in righteousness, let us have clear thoughts and sober minds on decisions that we make that will impact the lives of our children present and future. Just help us to do the things that is pleasing to your sight and beneficial to them. We just give you thanks, praise, glory, and honor, and we ask you in the Hebrew tongue of Yeshua HaMashia, we say Jesus, the Christ, our Lord. Amen.
On your agenda there, we have minutes, but you see those are from the closed session, so we will take care of those during our closed session portion of our meeting. I'd like to know, Madam Superintendent, were there any changes in our agenda?
No changes for me, sir. Not a single one.
I would like to postpone thirteen oh two, please.
Okay. Do you have any objections to removing thirteen oh two from the agenda?
Not for me, Mr. Chair.
All right, board members. All right, my consensus will remove that. Let that change, and then we'll move on to student recognitions.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, will you join me at the red carpet, please?
I'm sorry.
Do we have permission to adopt the agenda with that revision?
Sorry, ma'am. I'll leave everybody sat.
Very good. Now, will you join me at the red carpet, please?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming a very, very special young woman, Ms. Trinity Thorpe. Could you please come here for a moment and stand right here? Tiffany will be graduating from Granville Early College High School and has a very bright future ahead of her. While Tiffany may not be the valedictorian of her class, her principal says she works hard for what she gets and has always been determined to get her two-year degree with us. Tiffany has dealt with many struggles in her personal life that could have prevented her from succeeding, including a family member illness and having to work to help support her family in a single-parent home. She participated with the Granville County Police Cadets Program and is also generous with her time volunteering and participating in community canned food drives. When not at school, Tiffany spends most of her time at work. I've even had the pleasure of being served by her at Oxford McDonald's with a beautiful smile and fast service. She's a well-rounded, determined young lady who knows what she wants and is willing to do the hard work to get it. But aside from all of this, we are most proud that she has been selected to serve for the National Guard and is currently undergoing rigorous review process to become a 35-F Intelligence Analyst.
All right, all right.
Mrs. Thorpe will receive ten weeks of basic combat training and sixteen weeks of advanced individual training with on-the-job instruction. Part of this time spent in the classroom, part in the field, including time at Fort Huachuca, Arizona. Tiffany, we wish you all the best and are very proud of you.
Well, you knew Mr. Mayor would love this moment.
Tiffany, if you would, wait just one moment, please. Your sergeant, Sergeant Mans is here who helped recruit this young lady. Sergeant, anything you'd like to add?
I really didn't prepare anything. It's been a lot of work since June when we met. I've been, like I said, I'm so excited that we finally found the right job for her and that she's decided to take this step, so I've been, I'm nothing but proud of her.
Tiffany, did you have family and friends with you tonight? We ask you to stand, please, family members, friends. Congratulations. Wonderful.
Tiffany, if you get to down tomorrow, you'll get a special picture.
All right, so next week, I'm going to recognize a very special faculty member, Ms. Abby Dooley, third-grade teacher from Butlerstam Elementary School. Come on in. Ms. Dooley is being named the W R E L Teacher of the Week. After graduating from East Carolina University with her teaching degree, as Dooley returns to her native Granville County and is now in her fifth year of teaching, her principal says of Abby, "Abby encourages and leads her students through compassion and kindness. They know that she believes in them, therefore they believe in themselves. She teaches them that making mistakes helps us grow smarter and taking risks as learners is a good thing. Abby values every minute of the instructional day, making education valuable and important to all of her students. Abby, you truly represent excellence and achievement for all in our district. We're proud of you."
A good relationship, just what we need.
Yes.
I just wanted to send you an email and heard.
Abby, do you have some family members with you this evening?
I do.
Okay, let's show them off, too. Ms. Two says taking the credit. Okay, everyone, Ms. Two's a toddler. Wonderful, thank you, Abby.
We have, we have just one more quick impromptu set of recognitions. February was CTE month, and we have a special presentation tonight about career and technical education, but we have a few teachers here that have joined us, and we'd like them to march across the red carpet. So, please, Dr. Mary Shegay from Granville Central High School. Samantha Stewart from South Granville High School. Mark Jones from South Granville High School. And Miss Carolyn Bullock from Granville Central High School. Career and technical education is education that works, so thank you all very much for your hard work on the platform.
All right, but that is definitely not my favorite part of the night. We can go home now. All right, Dr. Wimborn, I think we'll hear from the public address at this house?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Acting Chairman, we have two people who have signed up for board comment tonight, public comment tonight. First, we have Martha Wilkie of NC Tag, and her topic is ESSA. Ms. Wilkie resides at 2030 Landmark Drive, Franklinton, North Carolina. Ms. Wilkie, when you're ready, I'll start, and you'll have five minutes.
Okay.
I'll give you a heads up when we have a minute left.
I will submit information to share with you about our organization and exactly what we are about before others have questions. So tonight, we are here to discuss ESSA, a few questions, and with the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, no child left behind, which is now the Every Child Succeed Act, as concerned citizens of Granville County, there are several of us, we would like to know what Granville County Board of Education is doing specifically to make sure that the ESSA plan for our district is being carried out with fidelity. For example, number one, is there an advisory council responsible for addressing the plan and its implementation, and if so, how was it created and who are the members?
So the board will not answer questions during this time?
Number two, how is the information relevant to, as the disseminated to the county stakeholders? I'm a parent, both my boys came through Granville County schools, and... Number three, what action steps are in place to assure that the plan is implemented with fidelity so that all of our scholars receive an equitable education within Granville County schools? Number four, how are educators receiving relevant professional development as a result of Title II? And then, number five, the disproportionate rate of scholars in North Carolina who are signed in effective for our content teachers has been identified as significant. What are we doing to make sure that every scholar has a highly effective, highly qualified teacher in his or her classroom? And those are just some of the questions we have as an organization to come alongside and do with best part of the case.
Thank you. Someone will be in touch with you.
Do you have another member of your organization that wishes to speak? We do have a second sign-up, and it simply says NC Tag. Was there someone else that wanted to share that time? If you could please state your name.
I'm Pamela Chriswell, and I'm also a Tag member, and we actually were here hoping to get answers to our questions tonight. So we would like to know how is that going to actually happen, because those are very relevant questions as it relates to the ESSA plan that is a federal prep plan that each state has to account for, as well as an equity plan. And so we wanted to know if the board was aware of ESSA. If so, what's your knowledge of it was, as well as what Granville County Board of Education is trying to do to make sure that the ESSA plan is implemented? So we thought we'd be able to have conversation, so if we're not going to get those answers, we just need to know how we get the answers to those questions.
That's right. So as listed on the sign-in sheet, board members will not respond to individual questions during this time, except to request clarification of points made, but we have taken your questions into account, and so you will receive a written response.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure. It's typically not the practice unless it's to request clarification of point made.
That's what it is.
Yes, sir.
Could you just explain more about what TAG is? I'm familiar with ESSA, but I'm not familiar with TAG.
TAG stands for Teachers Advocating to Lead Great Change, and it is a program that has been created by the Delta Sigma Theta Society Incorporated in conjunction with the Delta Education Foundation, as well as the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, that is working to, in multiple states, to help make sure that ESSA is implemented. It's a program, this is a program that's not really a spin-off, but it's a second program that came from the Delta Teacher Advocacy Campaign, where you had teachers from all over the country who participated in the program to learn more about teacher advocacy, student advocacy, cultural responsiveness, cultural competency, and all these different categories that help us to understand how we can work better with our students and make sure that they are successful. So they saw that there was a need to work with outside of that program to make sure that the ESSA plan was implemented with fidelity in all different areas, and so they decided to work in partnership with those organizations, as well as multiple organizations like the Education Trust and Black Educators Rock and other organizations to work together to make sure ESSA is implemented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. There are no additional numbers.
All right, thank you. Madam Superintendent, a report from you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair. Our chairman sends his greetings this evening. Mr. Leonard Keith also sends his greetings. He had an illness in the family this evening, and Mr. Beatty will come a little bit later. We are expecting him tonight. Good evening to everyone in our audience as well. We thank you for being with us tonight. In an effort to make certain our community stays abreast of the happening in Granville County Public Schools, I would once again provide a monthly update. To begin, I would like to extend a heartfelt congratulations to our very own Cradle Elementary School for winning this year's Speloration Junior, sponsored by the extraordinary Granville Ed Foundation, and we all look forward to as many teens as possible, yes, adult teens, participating in Speloration on March 28th. We love to have teens from all over the county, and you do not have to be affiliated with Granville County Public Schools in order to have a teen. I would like to also congratulate Wilton Elementary School for being honored last week as a Lighthouse Achievement School at the Leader in the Statewide Symposium. Our virtual enterprise students will be honored this Friday in Raleigh, North Carolina, as they get feedback from various business partners from across the state on their plans. All of these are incredible achievements and a testament that Granville County Public Schools is still on the move. Allow me to also thank everyone in advance for their participation in National Weather Week this week and National Child Nutrition Week. Please take time to say thank you to those in our child nutrition departments. You will hear more over the next few weeks in the very near future about our desire to join the No Child Hungry efforts occurring across our state. I would like to also ask our community to still consider joining us at our new lunch-and-learn opportunities whereby we share quick briefs on rather hot topics for upcoming events in our district. We held our very first one this past Friday and provided good information around restorative justice practices, which we hope to engage in school and soon, parent university, and parent electronic resources, which we are most proud. Our No Child Hungry hopes, and of course, our new budget process. All are well underway. Yes, you must bring your own lunch, but you can join us to learn. I would like to remind everyone that this is registration season, and we welcome all to visit our schools, for in my opinion, we are definitely the best educational option in town. Take a look at the course options, calendar options, and learning options. While there is so much more to share, celebrate, and recognize, I will conclude there this evening and ask everyone to please visit our Granville County Public Schools' electronic website for updates. This concludes my remarks this evening, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Do you have any board members that have reports? I'd like to share about two conferences that I attended over the last couple of weeks. A couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend the No Kid Hungry Conference with Dr. Wimborn and Patricia Crew, our child nutrition director. We got to learn about the need for universal breakfast and innovative ways to combat hunger in our schools by hearing how other schools and districts are tackling this area of work and excelling in increasing attendance, academic performance, and tackling the stigma that goes along with hunger in our schools. One step for us as a board to consider in this new budget cycle is the opportunity to use one-time funding from our fund balance so that we can pilot a universal breakfast program for two years so that we can get Granville County-specific data on how this program not only affects hunger in our district, but also how it ties to academic achievement. Also had the opportunity to go with Dr. McLean and some of our other district leaders, directors, principals, and teachers to the Leadership for Innovation work that we've done at the Friday Institute. We were tasked with solving a challenge in our district innovatively around the area of quality teaching. We're working as a team, and we'll return to Raleigh next month to continue our training and see what we've come up with, so you'll hear more about that in the coming weeks. Any other board members have anything to add? Madam Superintendent, I believe we're going to move on to academic success.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I would like to begin this evening with Dr. Michael Myron and Ms. Connie Ragland as they share with us our Vance Granville Community College CCP presentation.
Good afternoon, McLean and Vice Chair. I would like to introduce Ms. Ragland, and I'm going to turn it over to her Career College Promise is something that you hear us talk a lot about, and so tonight she's just going to give you some updated numbers and kind of tell you a little bit about what she does with the program.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening to the board. Again, I am Connie Ragland, and my official title is NC Works Career Coach. I work for Vance Granville Community College in agreement with Granville County Schools and Warren County Schools. I am the only person in that current position, and it's been very rewarding, and I am very inspired to be working with Granville County Schools once again. Just to give you a brief overview regarding our program, what is Career in College Promise? We often refer to it as CCP. It is a statewide initiative to provide eligible high school students with opportunities to earn credits through the local community college, which is Vance Granville, of course, tuition-free, so it's the most affordable education there is for college. Students can also take CTE courses that lead to a certificate, diploma, or state industry-recognized credential. This is done with the assistance of the school counselor and the NC Works Career Coach. The NC Works Career Coach, myself, I am placed in each public high school in Granville and Warren County school districts. The Career Coach assists students with determining career goals, identifying a program that would best help them to reach those goals, and a brief orientation is given to all of the students to explain the details of the program, the expectations of the program, and how to, the enrollment process begins. Just to give you an overall summary from January of last year, I started in January of last year, and so that program was already in place in 2016, but from January to December 2018, there were a total of 252 students that were advised and registered from the two school districts that I am employed in. Some of those students do, I do want to note, do attend early college high school. My role is specifically in the public high schools. Other 252 students advised, 99 of those students were or are enrolled in college transfer pathways, and 153 of those students were or are currently enrolled in career and technical education courses. Just to give you some oversight about the public high schools that I am currently in for last year and up to this point, we currently have, Granville Central has seven college transfer students, and then you can see the numbers, I don't need to read through all of those, but these are just some of the programs that are offered. JFWeb College Transfer, and you notice there that the majority of those students are information technology students. JFWeb School of Health and Life Sciences has a total currently of 18 students, and these numbers may vary just a little bit because of where we are in our semesters. Currently has 18 college transfer students, which is where the majority of those students are, and South Granville has 20 college transfer students, and then some of the other programs are listed there as well. I had one success story, and this is a time that I wanted to share with you. There are many success stories. We are always excited and eager to tell about the students succeeding in our program. There's one particular student that I've been working with since last summer. She is 17 years old. She's currently a senior in high school, when technically she would be a junior. She has a current high school GPA of 4.27, and she is ranked number one in the class. She has a college GPA, which is through our program and all the college transfer courses that she's taken, she's made straight A's, so she has a 4.0 college GPA. She has completed 14 CCP or college transfer credit hours, and she will have completed 27 hours by the time she completes the program in May, and she will be graduating a year early from high school. She's been accepted into several UNC schools, her top choice being UNC Chapel Hill. She is already planning to attend UNC Chapel Hill, and her goal is to become a doctor. And that finishing line there, their success is our success, is just basically how I feel about the program. We want every student to succeed. We know that there is so much opportunity, there's opportunities that are available to the students. We want them to take full advantage. I have received very, a lot of support from all the high schools, so I thank you all for just creating an environment that makes it easy for me to do what I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, board members? Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next this evening, we present to you individuals who work with our state and local and our school-level communities and schools. Dr. Michael, will you invite up our guests, speak C I S this evening, please?
Yes, Ms. Sharice Collins and her team, Ms. Amy Rice, and of course, we cannot forget Ms. Latanya Oakley, who is actually working at JFWeb with Ms. Rice, so I want to just invite you up.
And Mr. Willie Gus.
And Mr. Willie Gus, forgot about him.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'm Latanya Oakley, and it is a privilege to be here to speak with you all as the face of community and school in Granville County. For those of you all that may not be familiar with communities and school, we are a program that helps youth within the schools. We are currently nationwide, however, it's broken up into different segments, and so we are the face of the C I S Communities and Schools, or C I S of North Carolina. About two years ago, we received grants from the Aspire Connect to Success Connection, and we were two of C I S programs that were able to share in this grant. It was a $10 million grant, and we all had to share in this grant. The grant was so that we could deliver integrated state student supports to the schools to help with college or career preparation, to provide mentoring or peer-to-peer support to help underserved students graduate. C I S received a $750,000 grant to support the Powering the Future program, which serves students in grades nine to 12 in six rural high schools where graduation rates were far below the state average, fewer than 25% of our students were at grade level efficient. Those schools were Conway, Lilleton, Oxford, Warrenton, Weldon, and Windsor. This was a two-year grant opportunity that ended June 30th, 2018. I'm sorry to say two years ago, but well, that's when it started. So C I S has a model that is considered that what we do, the A B C plus P model, which we focus on attendance, behavior, coursework, and parental engagement. What that means for our students and for your schools is that we are dedicating, each school gets, that has C I S within it, has a dedicated student support specialist, such as myself, that is my title, in the high school, and what I do is coordinate and implement targeted, school-wide interventions aimed at increasing graduation rates and improving student achievement. We do that by working directly with the students, of course, we have a designated caseload, but we also work with the guidance department, the teachers, school leaderships, administration, anybody that's in the school. We try to partner and help to make their jobs easier by working with the youth that's in the school. We provide individual, each student in the program, get an individual goal where we work towards the student, and so the students take part in formulating the goal in which they need and what, so we're helping to move the needle. So we do this by meeting with the students weekly, some more than weekly. We address the needs, monitor effectiveness, provide support accordingly, track the students by school data, report outcomes, and we also provide or support school-wide and group-based supports. So what that means is that we have a caseload working with individual students, but we also just don't stop there. We do do activities that benefit the school as a whole, so school-wide events. We also connect with community resources by bringing them into the schools to help address the students' needs and strengthening relationships with parents and all that involved. Right now, we have seen, our goal is to provide, working on behavior... Right now, we have seen, our goal is to provide, working on behavior at JFWeb, so the schools decide what area that they feel like we need to target the most. Although we work on all of them, my main target is behavior. Right now, we have seen that 82%, 82% of the students that our case manage, we have seen them progressing towards improving their behavior. We have certain, I'm sorry, we have partners that we have did activities with, such as 4H, and over the years, I've only been at Web a year, but I've been with communities and schools for approximately a little over three years. And so prior to me coming in here, I wanted to go over some of the activities that has taken place. And so some of them have been the Leadership Academy, which we partner with 4H. We also partner with North Carolina A&amp;T University. We did the Speedway to Healthy, which we took kids to JFWeb School Kids, Behavior Kids, and we have them, took them to elementary schools where they were able to help teach the elementary kids about healthy living, healthy eating, and so on. We have partnered with teen coordinators per year that comes occasionally and do behavior modification. We had the Lighthouse Foundation come in a couple of years ago to do substance abuse prevention. We have taken the kids to the Education Day at Durham Bulls Stadium. Of course, without this program, some of our kids wouldn't get to travel outside of this area. We have brought in tutors to help with college students. We have brought in tutors, some college students from the area to help with our seniors on last year that were struggling, so that we could help make sure that they were able to graduate. We've partnered with the apprenticeship program with Mr. Mills for economic development. We have assisted several kids with mental health evaluations. When they're coming before me, my background is psychology, so when I know that there's depression or anxiety or something going on, we get with the parents and try to schedule an evaluation, and a couple of those parents, kids who didn't have the supports, I have transported them myself to get this done. We have started, partnered with the ACIM, we have the Backpack Buddies in the high school, again tutors. Upcoming events, it's a Beautiful Tomorrow Assembly, which I invite all of you all to come out March 27 at 2:00 p.m. We also have the Reality Store that's coming, that's going to do financial literacy with our students, and this is gonna, I don't know if you are aware of this, but it's the State Employees Credit Union. They come out and do a phenomenal job. Each student gets, you know, their own checkbook, life, careers, whether they graduated, not graduated. They give them their life, and they have to find life through this maze. So hopefully, we can get them to take school more seriously. Also have motivational seminars coming up and job readiness. So as you can see, at the beginning, I said that this grant ended on July in 2018. And so we're just here to seek support from you all to keep this program within the school, and I'm gonna have Ms. Rice to come up and just tell you the benefits she's seen since we've been in this school.
Latanya and I went to school together, graduated together, so she loves JFWeb High School, so it's just also nice to have someone from the community supporting communities and school. I think back to my father, when he retired from Web, this is exactly what he was doing, except it was through Grahamville County Schools. We had more personnel, we had the support. And it's sad to say that I think back then, we probably didn't have as many students who needed such support, and yet now we do not have those supports in place. So to have a possibility of partnership to continue with the group that supports our students. For students who are coming from at-risk homes, who are behind academically, studies show that the one thing that can make a difference is a connection from adults in their life that helps them overcome those obstacles and succeed. So the Communities and School Program sets that up to get these students, one, connected with our behavior person, it's an ability, but also to connect communities into our school and to even have more mentorships and partnerships. She is phenomenal. The students go and see her, but she's like, have you gotten permission from your teacher to make sure that you're here? And there's just so many things that our students face day to day that we don't realize until you're there every day and you start talking to students. And they're able to talk to Ms. Oakley in a way that's different from their classroom teachers, because there's not that pressure. And she makes herself available to have to call her. She called me the other day. She was in Henderson, had taken a student to the crisis center who needed an mental health evaluation, and just gave up her time to do that. So she's a part of our team, and we just, this partnership is an opportunity for us to support our students. So I hope that we can continue it. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. If I understand, so the program ended last June, is that correct?
So the grant was for two years, and it ended, and then the community and schools, because they saw the need at Web, and I was brand new, and they didn't want it to stop. They actually funded a position for this year without support from the district.
Correct, 100%.
100%.
Now, do you have any, any data metrics that shows the success of the program?
Sure, she provides me with data all that goes along. She has a core group of 40 students that she works directly with. It's her, you know, her caseload of students, that she tracks their data. Academics, behavioral improvement, happy referrals, attendance, those sort of things to get those. So she starts off, we do whole school, but based on referrals from teachers, from the principal, she starts with a core group of 40, meets with them regularly every Wednesday, having those conversations, checks up on them, checks their records, their grades, observes them in class. Ms. Wilkinson said the other day, I wish you could come in every day and observe, because they certainly do not want to let Ms. Oakley down. And so just having, you know, so sometimes it's just teachers being able to say, I need to go talk to Ms. Oakley. It's just having that person that checks in on them and is following up on their work, and another person to be accountable to. But yes, she provides me with data as well as the Community and Schools Program.
It sure is successful.
Yes, overall, successful. She's standing in my office, I don't cry a whole lot, I'm just that kind of woman, I don't cry. But she does, and so she'll come into the office sometimes and, you know, frustrated with that student, what are we gonna do about this student, Ms. Rice? What are we gonna do, Amy? And, you know, I'm like, we're gonna keep on plugging along, you know. We have a student right now who, she had a child last year, you know, and mom kicked her out not too long ago. And where do I go with my baby? And, you know, we've got this, you know, child who's dealing with that, and her English grades are low. You know, and so what can we do to help support you there, get you in some parenting classes without offending you, and also pull up your grades in English classes? She helps connect all that, has the conversation with the teacher, has a conversation with the students, and then puts that student in touch with resources outside of our school that can help her as well.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, thank you, Principal, what I said. And I just have two quick questions, two questions, hopefully relatively quick. One, what, I saw where Ms. Oakley, and I'm familiar with your work from, through unwrapping your gift, you said 82% success. Tell me about the 18%. Do you have to, I guess, put them through the program again?
I pray a lot, honestly. But yes, so once a kid is enrolled in the program, we try to catch them in the ninth grade. As long as there's availability, I have made exceptions, and we've gone over the 40. But they're just not from year to year, like have to re-enroll. Once they're in the program, we follow them throughout to graduation. That's our goal, to see them to the end. So a student, for most kids, you don't, you're not gonna see the results that we're looking for or praying for until about a year or later, a little longer than that. So we just keep working with this student. I have one student, I can give an example, that since I've been at JFWeb, this student has had all Fs. And so she had maneuvered her way through this system because she would get credits in classes that did not, you know, were not her core classes. But now she's hit a bump in the road, so what are you gonna do? She has a twin, twin is excelling. So I, she started following me, her pusher. I follow her around school, I am just in every class, and I'll hold her accountable for her work. Two weeks ago, there were all Fs on her report card. I was like, I'm gonna send this to your mom, I called her mom, I called her uncle, everybody's creating a team. And so every day, I'm snapshotting her grades. I'm so happy to say she has an 80, a 75, a 69, and a 54. Within two weeks, just me just following her around, like, I'm sick of this. So it takes time, yeah, I really am, but it takes time, and, but they have to have that willingness. So sometimes, more of the work is coming to motivate them. I don't know what the magic pill was, but it happened two weeks ago in my office, and so every day, I'm checking. There's a student that I call every morning to help with attendance. Are you at school? If you're not, where are you at, why, you know? So we're working on that, grades, ah, still praying, but I believe we're gonna get them there. So each kid gets an individualized, you know, program or plan, support plan, and we work from there. And sometimes, again, it's just trying to give them back that hope that you can do it. So with this one, I said, I've been saying this grade since I've been in high school. She said, me either, because she just wasn't doing it. School becomes a social outlet for them.
And there are some who have been with her, this is their third year now. And so there's some that are being so successful, sometimes I want to get in there and say, maybe I need to graduate, because I've got a whole lot more to do. But still, you don't want to yank that support out from underneath that has helped them be successful, so.
And behaviors are different, because they'll do well in grades, and then they're very promiscuous, or, you know, so I'm trying to keep them alive and safe and sound.
Great, thank you so much. Second question, basically, what does, what is the cost to fund the program for a year or to fund the program? They said it was two years.
We provided that information for you in your, in your folder.
Okay.
Behind the second sheet. And it's to fund the program completely for a year, is $80,000. And we are asking the district to meet us halfway with that for the high school position, but we also know the impact of it, and would potentially love to do some work in your middle schools as well. So that's another option.
I guess, would you have someone who could work middle school? I mean, you seem like you might be dedicated to the high school.
We would have to hire someone.
You would have, okay, okay. All right.
I did have a comment more or less along with the question, Ms. Oakley said something to reflect on with Mr. Mims about 82% success rate. To me, that's extremely good, because we will always have some. Not gonna quite be where we want them to be. But you said of a magic pill, and from observing you for just a few moments that you've been talking, and I know Amy, she's a reflection of Coach Cal, who we all knew and admired. But a magic pill, I think you reflected, is compassion. That's what I see in you as you stand there and talk, the face that's set about you. See, I believe that's what we like in so many arenas of life, is to have compassion for people. Because everybody wants to be loved. And when you know you're loved, you're prone to succeed. And that's what compassion does, it shows love. So I commend you on that, I can see it all in you.
And sometimes I can be the nice one, but she's giving them out there, and I just go over and give them a kiss, and they go back to class.
But you can just see it, so I'm thankful that we have a program, and I'm sure y'all will be distributors of that. But to me, that's one of the main things that we like so much in it, is actually compassion. And I just want to commend all of you for having it for our students, because they're the most valuable things on earth. And if you can save one, I tell you what, that person might rise up and be one of them.
And I'll brag on it, we, for African American History Month last month, we highlighted graduates from JFWeb who work in our community. And so Janita Allen, Tanya Thomas, you know, I just would get biographies on them and read them over to Entercom. And so, you know, we were able to highlight on Tanya, and just that she started in her career in technical education program with a degree in psychology, but then said, I want, cosmetology was me, cosmetology, then said, I want more, goes back to school, and gets her master's degree, you know, and graduated Kewalde. So it was just nice for our students to be able to hear that as well, that someone from here and the steps that they have gone to, and then to return and work with our students, you know, so it's good stuff.
And I just wanted to point out too, on the 82%, that that's actually just after second quarter. So we still have work to do, so we will probably get higher than that, so.
And I do have a follow-up question, Mr. Mims, a little too, because I was thinking about funding the Twitter. And my concern was, are there other avenues, private contributors, or all of us that y'all come to campus that's willing to have a step in and fund those type things? Have you been fortunate enough to get people of those lives?
We're working toward it. We are also a nonprofit, so we do that on a radio to even stay. If you know of any organizations within this community that you would like for us to reach out to, to offer support for the program, we welcome that as well. So if you know anyone.
Yes, gentlemen, for your consideration this evening, this group on last year came forth, but they came forth after budget season. So once they figured that out, they decided to pay us a visit a little earlier this year, so that we may take this $40,000 tag, which is half of the salary, under consideration for this year. So we thank you all so very much. All right, CTE Month just concluded. Dr. Michael Myrick, with you in the suit, and Ms. Tamara, with Bartley's joystick.
So again, good evening. As you know, I serve as the CTE Director for the district, along with a couple of other, other things that I do. But my job as CTE Director would not be possible without these two ladies. And I call on Emily Sue much more than I call on Tamara. And so it kind of triples down to Tamara, but Tamara is our person that's out in the community. She's our Career Development Coordinator. Any business in this community probably have seen her face or received an email or phone call from her. If they have not, she is on her way to their, their local businesses. As soon as they place the open sign or we're hiring, she's right there to ask, to see what they can do for the district. And Emily Sue also serves as our IMC, which is our Information Management Coordinator, basically our testing coordinator for CTE. Again, I'm the Director, but she's the Director. And I just wanted to say that this evening, and we can go on to the next slide. And I think I'm gonna turn it over to them right now, and I'm not gonna turn it over to them. Okay, wonderful. We had our march, I have my marching order. In your, not in your packets, but on your screen, you can see this a little better. And it just talks about our CTE enrollment and our program areas, but where I would really like for you to focus on is our CTE graduation rate. If you can see, our CTE graduation rate is 98%, and the state's CTE graduation rate is 85.9%. And so when we talk about the CTE graduation rate, these are our concentrators. These are students who have taken at least two, excuse me, two CTE courses, and they have been able to graduate over the course of the year. This is something that we're very, very proud of, and we want to continue to highlight that with some of the other positive outcomes that we have with the program. So again, 98% is our CTE concentrator rate, and we far exceed what the state expects us to be with these students.
And while he's got that up on the screen, I think it's also great to notice the CTE concentrator's positive outcome, which we'll talk about here when we do our concentrator surveys. Our follow-ups, 97.6% of our graduates say their success, the positive outcomes, comes from CTE. So I think that's a really great way to start off, to end CTE Month, but to start our presentation. And also to give credit where credit is due, in the audience tonight, we have some of our CTE teachers that obviously walk the red carpet, but our jobs couldn't be done if it wasn't for them, because they're the, they're the connection, and they're our students' heroes. So if they will stand for just a brief moment, I'd love to give you more than just a standing ovation, but these are the people that will look at you. So you'll see this slide here about middle school, and just take a moment to look at it while I share some information with you. Middle school is where students are introduced to CTE through our exploratory classes. This is a chart showing the CTE program areas that are offered at each school. The courses students take are aligned to these programs. Students at Butler STEM, Holy, and Mary Potter take Computer Design Discoveries 1 and 2. Computer Science Discoveries is an introductory computer science course from Code.org. That empowers students to create authentic artifacts and engage with computer science as a medium for creativity, communication, and problem solving. Students at Butler STEM also can take Project Lead the Way courses, and one being Design and Modeling. Students discover the design process and develop and understand Students discover the design process and develop and understand the influence of creativity and innovation in their lives. All of the courses that are available to our students simply gives them a foundation for any of the program areas offered at all of our high schools. For example, students at Northern Bramble, Mary Potter, and Holly in Agriculture can transition to JF Webb and South Bramble in the Agricultural Pathway. Likewise, Butler STEM Middle School students in the Technology Education Program area can tran, ooh, excuse me, can transition to Bramble Central High School's Pathway for Advanced Manufacturing. The next slide you'll see is our progression into high school. So high school is actually where students choose their CTE pathway. And this is a chart that's showing the CTE program, uh, the program areas that are offered at all of our high schools. And students taking CTE courses in high school are simply designing their career path in chosen program areas and courses. In our high school, CTE courses are enabling students to possibly earn industry-recognized credentials and have work-based learning experiences like internships. Many of our students credit their CTE courses with their higher education and/or their world of work experiences. What we are doing here in our CTE classrooms is in a direct alignment with our State Superintendent of Public Instruction. And Dr. McLean had the privilege and the opportunity to attend the meeting during its release. What's your path? It's your choice. You'll notice on the next slide that, as we mentioned before, February was CTE Month. This was celebrated all across the district, state, and country. The theme for the month was Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow. Our teachers and students participated in a variety of activities during the month that helped illustrate the theme of CTE Month. We have quite a few events that are coming up, and we'd like to invite you to attend any of them. In your packets, you actually have a sheet that tells you about our upcoming events and the dates. We do have our, um, twelfth grade seniors that are going to be taking our work keys, National Career Readiness Credential or Certificate, um, in a couple of weeks. We also have the Middle School Truck Fair, where we will have fifth graders and eighth graders come to Butler STEM Middle School to learn all about careers that involve some type of vehicle or boat. We also have our tenth grade career fair. We also have our eighteen-plus job fair in May, where we are giving opportunities for seniors who want full-time employment to be hired. So they come to the job fair, have interviews, turn in resumes, and look for full-time employment before they graduate in preparation for their summer. We also have our OCS Career Fair. And then in May, we will celebrate an evening celebration for all of those seniors who have completed their career readiness credential. We also have many events that are going on that help the success of our CTE program. Those are internship placements, classroom field trips. We also have program area field trips. We also invite people to come into our classrooms, we call them guest workers because we want them to come in and share what they do at their world of work with our students. We also visit the Community College and many of their program areas. And nonetheless, is our CTE Advisory Council, which Emily Sue's going to tell you more about. The purpose of the Advisory Council is to help align our CTE program with the needs of employers in the community. This will ensure our programs teach the most up-to-date skills required to prepare students for their post-secondary education. An advisory council is essential to CTE programs because local business and industry leaders have firsthand knowledge concerning current business trends, technological demands, and employment expectations. You will see here, our last meeting was on December seventeenth, where we had a goal of what can be done to increase visibility and partnerships. We had in-depth discussion on how our CTE curriculum and industry align. We discussed the idea of industry sponsorships for our CTE classroom courses. And our next meeting will be held on March nineteenth. The goal for this meeting will be to focus on all who want and need the same things as not to duplicate time and services. We will discuss our CTE course offerings, partnership opportunities, fall planning, as well as additional partnerships for nineteen-twenty. They are all going to be indicative of our program offerings and further economic growth and development. So in our Bramble County Public Schools CTE Department, we like to say that a picture is worth a thousand words. And here on the screen are a few of the many pictures we have of our CTE students actively involved in class labs, in-class projects, and CTSO events. At this time, we'd like to show you a portion of two short videos that shows student work in our CTE classrooms.
The video that you just seen is a video game that was created, that was created by students in the scientific, yeah.
Siberia.
Siberia's class at Bramble Central. So our students are, you know, get the opportunity to really create and be creative. Uh, video games are really hot right now, right up the street in Raleigh. We have one of the largest video gaming hubs in the country. So for our students to get this exposure right here in our, in our own community is very, um, good for them.
And you're welcome to go back and finish watching any of the vlogs at the end. And I had to look twice ago, this is really, like, creative by students, and it's pretty amazing. And then second, show part of the clip.
Today we went around South Bramble High School to challenge students to pronounce the commercial products ingredients versus Ora's ingredients. This is what happened. Try to read the ingredients on this product.
Water, vitamin, serum, natural, natural, very.
Mineral oil, demit, demet, and co.
Glycerin.
Stearate, controling mate.
So, alcohol. Phenol, uh, oxymethrinol, acrylates.
Okay, now try to read Ora's products ingredients. Simple.
Ora offers products from lotions to bath bombs, even the pens after shave. To find out more about Ora, head on over to our website and follow our social media pages to keep up to date with upcoming products.
And that is a VE commercial from one of our VE classes at South Bramble. So in addition to everything we have shared, the best way simply to see CTE in action is to attend our events, visit classrooms, and talk to our students. So we'd love to take you, the board members, on a district-wide CTE tour of each campus and their CTE departments on Tuesday. That would be Tuesday, May seventh, from eight-thirty to three-thirty. We'll take you on a tour. And you're getting your invitation now so that you may put it in your, in your calendars to save the date. Thank you for the opportunity to share about CTE and how we are working to provide our students with experiences and opportunities to make them college and career ready.
I want you to just applaud because this is incredible work. It's contemporary, and for us to prepare students for the world we've not even seen yet is amazing.
I thought your videos were exceptional.
And it's so hard to pick and choose what, what videos and what, but we all sat there. We just want to show them all, so that's why we want to take you on a trip because we really would like to show you all this out there.
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Just so I can understand, being you're on the board here, if you look at, let's say, look at Webb. It says program areas, back from your program area slide, and it talks about agriculture, business, finance, IT. First, this Webb has auto mechanics and, uh, mason. Where do those fall under, or is that would be under trade and industrial?
Exactly, so trade, when you're looking at JF Webb, trade and industrial would be your auto mechanic and your masonry classes at that particular campus.
And like welding at Central would be under?
Actually, their welding is going to be under the agriculture because their particular agricultural course has the welding component in it.
All right, so all, but all those traditional skill level training is incorporated in these different topics.
And I don't know if you'll be able to do it from what's on board docs, but we can get this for you. Is there, those are hyperlinks up there where it says high school and middle school, and those are actually all of our course offerings so that you can actually see all that we offer at high school, um, and middle school.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me, I certainly would like to, I guess, uh, be able to access those hyperlinks. Uh, particularly because I was curious when I looked at the Career and Technical Student Organization enrollment, and the way that you just described, I guess, the masonry, or whether it's plumbing or electrician. What I see is zero. And I was wondering, after listening to you, uh, why would that be, you suppose?
Well, CTSOs are hard, so I think they will tell you it's hard because it's time after school. They are co-curricular, but there's a lot of opportunity for meeting after school. And so we just have to be able to, to be able to handle having, what would you say, the advisory team to support them. Um, it's one area that we've worked on, and actually I know that we've talked with the masonry instructor because Skills USA is actually who they would fall under. And they have some actual masonry, um, activities and competitions. And so that's actually one of his personal goals, um, is, is to work on that and to actually take a team there hopefully in the next year or so. So that's something that we're working on, but, um, when they're tied, when they have any demands in other areas, it's hard that we, that we work on that. But I do have to say, one thing that we all do is that we incorporate a lot of the CTO activities, CTSO activities into their classrooms. So although they may not be leaving campus to go compete, he's embedding that type of information in the courses.
Thank you very much.
And they also participate at the state theory events, uh, some of the state theory events. And he, in the masonry class in particular, also sometimes are tasked with doing work around the district on some of our schools, so they get that handled experience outside of the classroom.
And one thing you'll see about CTE is it's ever-growing, and you'll see our numbers. They fluctuate, they come and go, just simply because we have students to graduate, and then we have to get our freshmen back in, and, and just, you'll see the numbers grow. And then all of a sudden, we start having, um, brothers and sisters and cousins, and then you start having the children of, of our generation, and then all of a sudden, our CTSOs are flourishing. So you'll see everything, you'll see the programs just grow.
If I could ask a question for clarity, the classes like masonry, I think, did I, were you correct that they're all for after-school hours?
No, the class.
The CTSO, the, the Career Technical Student Organizations are after-school typically.
The club, the club is after-school, but the courses.
The courses are during the day. He offers, um, an introductory level, um, a level one, level two, and a level three masonry.
I remember last year from the product, JF Webb's student year was the masonry.
Yeah, Mr. Perry, yes. And if you ever go over, if you get an opportunity, they make models, and I mean, they're doing actual.
What she means to say is when you come on that tour, I'm the bus driver, we will take you on a tour and we'll show you all about that.
You'll see all the sampling that they do. And if, and if truth be told, you'll actually probably get to lay a brick or two because we've had that opportunity. And that's like why we would love for y'all to come to the career fair because he's actually out there having them, us all, lay bricks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, finally, in your department this evening, under academics, targeted support and improvement, Dr. Myrick. Is this straight from ESA?
Essence, yes. So targeted support and improvement, um, that's what TSI stands for. TSI is a part of, next slide, of every student succeeds at designation. You've heard me talk quite a bit about ESA over the last year or so. And one of the components, the, the changing pieces in, in the ESA, in ESA from No Child Left Behind is the T, is TSI, and there's another component to it called CSI. But I'm not going to address CSI tonight, which is comprehensive school improvement, because we do not have any schools that are in comprehensive school improvement. So just for the sake of this presentation, I want to just talk briefly about TSI. So, TSI, just kind of give you a broad overview of it. It's a school with any subgroup, whether subgroup letter grade is at or lower than a state school performance grade score. That is, they, they look at the lowest performing school in the state. And if you have any subgroup at a particular school that is at or below that subgroup, that particular subgroup is identified as a TSI or Targeted Support and Improvement subgroup. In the, in the state, there are one thousand six hundred and thirty-five TSI schools this year, identified out of the two thousand six hundred and forty-five schools in the state. Luckily, this year, we were able to receive some one-time funding provided to TSI schools and this is funding, from my understanding, that was left over from No Child Left Behind and some of the grant funding that that particular, um, piece of the legislation had. One of the pieces that we are able to, and happy that we are already on this track, is the NC Star School Improvement Planning Tool must be used for all TSI schools. So we have now, now in our third year of NC Star, and all of our schools have come on board and are using NC Star. And one of the designations that, the funding that is provided to the state, to us from the state, is to train our teachers and use it, and train our school improvement teams on using the school improvement planning tool. But because all of our schools have already had that training, we're able to use the funding that we were, that we were received on other professional development opportunities that will support the subgroups in our district where we need it the most. And it's not listed there, but just in case you are wondering, the subgroups that we have in our district that are in TSI are primarily our students with disabilities and our students that are English learners. Any questions?
Thank you for that update, Dr. Myrick.
Now we'll move into health and safety.
Absolutely. Dr. Winmore, this evening, will you share with us the construction contract we had to have?
Yes, ma'am. Superintendent of the Board, tonight I bring to you two construction contracts per board policy. Uh, the board must approve all contracts over one hundred thousand dollars. So tonight, uh, there are two. The first is with NC Sound. This is for the installation of video cameras at all schools. Um, that could be at a total price of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Uh, we did follow the proper bid procedure for that, and, uh, we are very excited about this project. It's, uh, it's about to begin. I'll note also that seventy-five thousand dollars of this cost would be offset by a state grant that we, um, asked for and received. The second contract is with Piedmont Service Group. Um, this is the company that actually won the bid to do the HVAC renovations at Butler STEM Elementary in Creedmore. We've also been using them with a preventative maintenance contract. We have just about exhausted a three hundred thousand dollar contract with them, and so we are renewing it at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars so they can continue to do the preventative maintenance work and light repair in all of our schools.
This is an action item, so board will read your pleasure for these contracts. I have a question.
Uh, do we, okay, do we discuss this?
Probably need to get a motion first and then we'll go into discussion. Okay, all right, so we have a move to accept these two contracts as presented, a second for that? All right, now discussion, Mr. Mims, I think you first. Sure. Uh, when I looked at, at this, uh, Dr. Winmore, these were discussed, I guess, back in October timeframe. Since, uh, and it listed the, it listed the schools.
Individually.
That's exactly right. So I wanted to ask, and I see the three eighty-one, two fifty-four, but I wanted to ask you, now, how would that impact?
The schools that have been blessed.
Mary Potter and Toll.
Thank you, that's a very good question, and we are working with our board attorney to, um, Rod Malone to write contracts such that each school will be completed individually. So we will not be doing the work here at Joe Toller and Mary Potter Middle School. But this is the original contract that was put out for bid and awarded, so, um, we deduct those amounts from the total. They, they simply will not, that work will not be done at those two schools. They, they simply will not, that work will not be done at those two schools.
Okay, so the contract amount won't be 381.
It'll be less.
381 less.
That's correct.
So I think we need to find out what that amount is, so the, the board can vote on a specific amount.
It would be specific, it makes sense to do it anyway.
True. Do you want to just?
So if I may interject in mine, and I know that Rod was reviewing these contracts standing, so tell me if I'm misunderstanding, but as, this is a master contract? So the idea is that they still have to receive, that it's up to 380 whatever? But they still have to do an individual request for each job?
Though the contract will, will be for each school site.
So this does not give the contractor a go-ahead to do everything?
No. No, but this was the bid process that we followed at the time, because this began before there was any decision about school closure. So this work, you know, this bidding process began back in September, I believe. It was a very lengthy process, so we, this is the reason we, we bid it out, not as, not just as a total job, but we subdivided for each school as well. Does that answer your question? Mr. Smith?
So, and we're talking about the Piedmont Service, or I'm sorry, the...
Come in, should I?
Yeah, HVAC one right now. So that one is the not-to-exceed 150, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, and I was referring to the NC Sound contract, which is the one Mr. Mims pointed over.
Okay, I apologize. I was looking at the HVAC, the HVAC contract is a not-to-exceed.
Yes.
So it's, it's a master order, but then individual ones would be built, so I apologize. I thought you were talking about the HVAC work.
No, so, yes, if you look at, if you open up the, the contract for the video cameras, the exhibit, right here, specifies the bids by school. And so what we'll be doing, this is the, the master agreement that, that won the bid. We will be issuing a separate contract for each one of these schools. And Mr. Malone has been working with Lynn Henderson about the process that we'll be doing for that. So we simply will not issue a contract for Joe Toler, nor Mary Potter, unless of course the board directs us to do so.
Let me just make one more comment to that. I just did some, I guess, quick math, because the original contract was 381, 254. When I look at those two schools, it brings it down from 381 to 338. However, it does say for Mary Potter slash Phoenix Academy. So not knowing how much that would be, I think we need to, we, we need to look at our numbers so the board knows exactly what is, how much is approved.
Mr. Smith? Dr. Oberg, where is, where's this money coming from? Is this, do we have this money already set aside, or is this funded?
Yes, we do have this, no, no, this is not from fund balance. This is money that we have budgeted in the operations budget.
On the, on the safety initiative, do you know offhand how much total budget allocation we made for that, for this budget year?
Say that again, Mr. Smith.
For the, for the, all the safety initiatives? The surveillance cameras, the locks, the expenses, do you know, do you have a figure for what the total amount that we have budgeted out of our budget for this year?
Well, one of the problems, I hesitate to say, is because this project may span two fiscal years. In fact, I'm pretty sure it will. Even if they were to begin their work tomorrow, they will not do all of these projects before June 30th. So some of this, some of this, these individual school contracts will fall under next year's budget. So, but yeah, I can certainly get that information for you, it's not hard for us to, to generate.
So if, if it goes to next year's budget, then that would be part of the total budget outlet that we'll have to be talking about this spring. But if we commit to this, then we're committing to whatever extra amount for next year, since we can't cancel the contract halfway through.
Right, so we can, we can, we, and we have allocated this amount of money to be able to spend this year. And if, for some reason, we're not able to execute all these contracts before June 30th, like I'm thinking, we will be able to put that money into other projects quickly. So, I mean, it's not tying up...
You can't carry it over to this surveillance contract, no, you can't span a fiscal year.
You, you can actually, and we, and we quite often do with, with capital outlay. Capital outlay often bridges fiscal years.
So that would, that would avoid us having to take out money from next year's budget?
That's correct.
So, yeah, the way it's written, it's a separate purchase for each school? So they just won't give them notice to proceed? In other words, you said, is this sunk if for some reason funding becomes no longer available? The answer is, we would just not proceed with the remaining schools, wherever.
But it sounds like we've already got the money set aside.
Yes, it is.
Do you have other questions? So the motion we have on the floor now is to approve the contract amount of the 381, 254. So talking with the attorney, we have two options, it sounds like, is that we can vote on this motion as it is, or we can amend it based off of the concern about the individual schools, if that's necessary.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I would say that I would be in favor of amending it because we don't really know, I guess, when we look at Mary Potter and Phoenix Academy, will we need the entire 25, 641? Or could that figure be different? And that's my point. If the figure's different, I mean, we can't approve 381, 254. We need to know what, we, we just need to know what we're buying, that's all.
Mr. Smith, I guess you make a point too. It looks, it just looks a little funny, when you're approving money for something that you know you're not going to spend it on. The way it is, we still have the total, and all the things in there, it just looks like, yeah, how can I put it?
Doesn't look right.
It doesn't look right, like you're baiting the trap, I was going to say. It, it just doesn't look right, because you're approving money for something that you know you're not going to spend it on. So I'll be in favor of amending this also, to make it look more reasonable.
So, Mr. Smith, it was your motion, so you could just revise your motion to, I guess, move to approve only the HVAC contract?
Or with the revise of liking Tole School and Mary Potter?
Well, I don't think the HVAC contract had that issue, right? It didn't have a specific...
Okay, so you didn't want to approve the HVAC, and get that one out of the way?
Because that's just a district-wide maintenance, am I understanding correctly?
Yes, that is not full-specific.
Then I move to amend that we change my vote, so to approve the HVAC contract.
Mr. Yee, would you be siding with that?
Yes.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing the motion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? How would we proceed off of the security camera?
Well, if I may, you can direct me to not do any of these schools. The, the reason that they are all in here, as I said before, is because when we started this process, we hadn't made any decisions. So this is the result of, of, you know, when the ball began rolling back in the fall. So all of the companies bid out on all schools. So I believe that Mary Potter, this $25,000 includes full coverage. So we did a, we even used our safety committee to help us decide camera placement, law enforcement helped us. That's full coverage of that campus. Knowing that we plan on using it, it's, you know, whether or not the board would, would like to go in that direction. I think currently they have an antiquated and largely broken camera system. I see Dr. Lipson nodding her head. It's in very bad shape. So I believe that it would be prudent to keep that. That would just be my recommendation.
We need to keep Mary Potter in the contract.
Quick question, what, okay, this is to install it. Is there any other costs that we don't see to maintain it?
No. No, we are purchasing a lifetime license for the software. Certainly, there'll be a server in each school, and it includes, you know, cameras, the wiring, everything. So there will be no ongoing expenses after that install.
So we will have the ability, when a camera breaks, or vandalism, or whatever, the ability within our own maintenance department to repair?
Yes.
Without extra costs?
Stan, would we have a need to still have cameras at Joe Toler because we've not sold it?
Well, I guess that depends on our sort of near-term plans with the building. It certainly would allow us the opportunity, if there were any break-ins or theft or any of that stuff, to see what's going on. I have already talked with our maintenance staff about the need to have someone check on that building physically daily. So I don't know, I guess we would have to weigh the price versus what our intention, what, you know, the intention would be for the plans of the campus. It is $17,000.
Again, there's never something that you would get to that one.
We could delay that to be one of the very last ones that we do, and then the board would have time to decide if they wanted to do it, whatever you direct me to do.
Do you, do you need action tonight in order to get this going, is that the...
That would be my preference, because I, I would, I would very much like to get these cameras installed as soon as possible. We have some schools that are in great need of them.
Well, why don't we make a motion to approve the contract with the clause in there, pending the decision of what will be done to Tole School?
You've heard a motion from Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion based off that motion?
So just for the minutes, am I understanding that the motion is to approve the contract, but instruct staff not to move forward specifically with Toler until further instruction? Okay.
Understood.
Okay. Do you have further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Wonderful. Thank you, it is time, gentlemen, on last week, you received the updated bus wrapped information requested in our last meeting. And Dr. Winmore, will you bring us up to speed on that, this is for action decision as well?
Yes, ma'am. So tonight, we are bringing some additional drawings of the three options. And what the Transportation Department has done is to provide the board with some information that is, I guess, hypothetical, because it's based on current enrollment and residence of students today. So if option one, attendance lines simply merged, Toler and Stoveall together, you can see that it would add these routes. And you can see the earliest first pickup, and that, that would be here. So 6:05 start time, that's when the bus would start, a 6:27 first pickup, a 6:15 start, 6:46 first pickup, and so on and so forth. So in your packets that I gave out on Thursday night, it also includes a chart that showed all of that information. So really, you've, you've had a chance, I'm happy to walk down you through any of these.
I do have a question, since I missed your, there's an ID, and I received that package. Your game is the start pickup time, what would be the arrival time destination of the school?
Uh, the arrival time would be 7:40, I believe, for Stoveall Shaw Elementary School.
So roughly an hour and a half?
Um, let me pull this up for you, sir.
It's after-school starts.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, why are you doing the next question, just to generate more information? Is it, has it always been policy that we start our, our middle school and high schools at 8:30, and our elementary schools at 7:30?
I believe it has some, I'm speaking for my dollars, just I believe it has some with the sharing process, but I think Stan, you speak to that better?
Yes, sir. It does have everything to do with the sharing process on campuses.
Right, but I mean, if we switch that, if we, if we start the elementary schools at 8:30, and the middle, and the middle and high schools at 7:30, has that ever been looked at?
So flip the...
Flip the start in the others?
Yeah, I don't, not since I've been here, has it been a discussion?
Do we know, do any of the districts in the state have a different, you know? Dr. McLean, do any other districts start their high school at 7:30, their elementarys at 8:30?
Yes, right next door, we grow up at 4:01. High schools begin at 7:30, 8:00. Most elementary schools begin around 9:00, and middle schools are sort of in the middle.
How does that work?
Wake is high school's question.
Making to wait, oh, wait, is the same.
You know, there are pros and cons. The research says those high school lines are not open functioning until later in the morning. So there are those who don't like it and advocate very differently than what the district has done. But it's done all sorts of ways, I would say.
I, I can say that my daughter's elementary school doesn't start till 9:15, so, and that is a couple of hours wasted in the morning when elementary school lines are very much ready to go.
They are.
But, but, it's, you know, it's always one or the other because of buses.
The sharing of buses controls it. The same with us, my niece doesn't start until about 9:00 or 8:00 or something, as a kindergartner in late.
So you're happy to, you were in there as far as...
I don't know about happy, I don't know if you've ever had the thought to be happy about it. But I will say, when I arrived here, this is what we were doing. And we've sort of kept that mantra without reason to investigate differently. But it doesn't mean it can't be done, it can if we like to afford it.
I mean, just, I'm just, you know, possibly, we're talking about 6:05 pickup times for kindergarten, first grader. But if, if that's, if they're up and ready to go then, as opposed to a high schooler at 6:05, then we may not want to mess with.
I was at Partisan Studies a couple of years ago in Almanz, where they, they were toying with it, and I'll tell you, those, those elementary babies are definitely ready to rep, to, to go. And high schoolers, much like the research said, weren't quite up yet, ready to rock and roll. And then parents had concerns about who would watch the younger ones, whose day didn't begin until 9:00, and they had to leave by seven something to get to their jobs by 8:00. So there were all kinds of, that there are, so I, I don't know, that it sort of half dozen of one six in the other. And so we've never tinkered with it, at least not as long as I've been here, but it doesn't mean we can't.
And obviously, we can't afford to buy twice as many buses.
That I know we can't do.
Just, I have another question, that, that, and you may be getting to, from looking at this, the start time and the pickup time, how does, how would this correlate to the start of time for the rest of the district again?
Yeah, so as, as Harry said in our last meeting, we do have some routes that are longer, but not many.
But the start time?
Oh, the, as far as the earliest pickup?
Yeah, not only, not just the recent structural toll in Stoveall Shaw, West Ox, but I think in southern county as well. What's the average start time for the elementary schools to be picked up?
Yeah, I don't know the, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I'd like to see a comparison of that, to see what time some kids will be on.
We, we have students that are getting picked up as early as 5:50 in the morning. And that is in the southern part of the county. Now, as far as the average start time, I could, I, I think I may have that, but again, the, these are hypothetical. So this is not necessarily what would occur next year, but it's taking the current enrollment and current residences and current ridership now, and applying it to what it would look like if we added them into these three options.
Do we have hypothetical of what's going on in the other areas of the county? Because I'm just curious, I'm just curious what would be the time in comparison to one end of the county, elementary kids getting on the bus versus down in another county? Just for the sake of knowing comparison, of a child getting up in the morning, going to elementary school, kindergarten, what happened, middle school. I think it would just be good information to have. Because that's probably could be something that you would want to put out anyway and know to avoid someone having something to say down the road about. So, that's why I brought up the question, kind of, what is the average timeframe? I'm sure you all would have a timeframe when your buses start in the southern part of the county and when they start picking kids.
We do. I mean, I just don't have that available to give you right this moment. I mean, we have, we have lists of all that stuff, so.
And the other thing I'll, I'll add is, and I thought it was very nice, I visited with the bus garage after our last meeting, and they even offered to sit and meet one-on-one because each of you had certain school structures and riderships in your departments, sort of in the areas you sort of oversee a little more than others. So, it might be worth time to just sit with Cindy Day and sort of see what that ridership looks like. She certainly offered and we're happy to do that.
And those roads, those, excuse me, those routes change on a regular basis, too.
So, however, it looks like option two looks to be the best. Is that what you all are advocating or are...
We are recommending option three, and the reason for that is just the way that the, the attendance lines were drawn. Option three is a cleaner line. Option two has a little bit of a hook that goes up and grabs one road. And I think the difference here, if you look, is really only, it's going too fast. About six kids difference. Based on just sort of looking at the drawing of the line itself geographically, Harry, Cindy, myself, we looked at it. We think three is just cleaner. But again, this is, it was six students different based on current enrollment.
And is it? And this is, this is a board decision as opposed to you all who are the experts who know a lot more than we do?
So, it's a...
This is the lines?
Attendance lines.
Is it, is it a board decision because it...
It's changing the attendance lines at the school.
As opposed to the bus...
As opposed to the bus.
Lines.
Yep.
I'm still curious though, if we can't give a timeframe that we know when the buses on the upper part of the county begin their rounds.
Mr. Smith, what I would ask is, do you, do you want him to provide that before we do action on this or we push it to another meeting?
Well, it's not going to matter because the timeframe has been given us a little fifteen minutes apart. But I'm just curious.
We can get that.
Like, you think we would know that? What time our buses start hit the road?
I think he said again, he just didn't have it for us tonight.
I'm saying again, you think we would just know that, that what time our buses start?
We have over a hundred buses, so I don't, I don't have all that information at my fingertips. I'm happy to give it for you, though. I really am.
So, board, this is an action item tonight. So, we would entertain a motion on the, you've heard what staff's recommendation is. Stan, do you have anything else to, to talk about your recommendation?
No, sir.
All right. So, we entertain a motion on what the board would like to do.
I move to approve the recommendation of the, of Dr. Winburn's staff.
So, that'd be option three?
Option three.
Do we have a second?
No, I'll say.
Mr. Mills? Any further discussion, questions? All right. So, this is to approve. Option three is presented by the staff, which would be the new attendance lines that begins twenty nineteen, twenty. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh-huh. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Winburn. Will you give us our proof update, please?
Yes, ma'am. I sure will. So, if you recall, we brought to the board some information about the roof that had been installed on the addition at Gramble Central High School. This is work that was done less than three years ago and was leaking significantly throughout the site. We've been working closely with Rod Malone, Eva's colleague, about this. We entered into the tolling agreement with all the parties that were involved so we could try to mediate and work through this issue. It looks like that is probably not going to, at some point, we're going to have to enter litigation, I believe. We did get an independent assessment of the roof, and that is what you see attached here. It basically, their, their recommendation, I'll just pull that up quickly, you can see is that it is our professional opinion that any repair scope is previously attempted is only a temporary fix. At best, we believe the only permanent repair to the ongoing failures is to remove the existing membrane and Secure Rock coverboard and install a stable gypsum coverboard and new membrane. So, in other words, replace the roof. And this is a, a large, extensive and expensive job. So, we're working with, again, with Mr. Malone on the next steps for that.
And just to add to that, my recollection from board members, the last time we brought this to you, the leaks seemed to have abated after the last repair. So, we were kind of waiting on that, but is my understanding that it is leaking again?
Yes, leaking a lot. All this right now.
I'd just like to know, so was replacing the entire roof a discussion when you initially, I guess, had a discussion?
I think that was one of the, yeah, it was one of the possibilities that was discussed with the architect, the general contractor, and the, and all the parties. It wasn't discussed, yes.
Okay. And I appreciate you saying that because I wasn't sure exactly discussed with whom, but I remember having a conversation. So, now, if it is, if there's a likelihood that there's litigation, now we have to decide who's going to be responsible for replacing the roof. I don't know whether to look at you or look at the attorney. The point is, just, you know, somebody needs to decide who's going to be responsible for it.
Yes. So, we have been, we have made a formal demand on Johns Manville, and, which is the roofing contractor, and have asked them to respond within the next two weeks. So, that was just sent out, I believe, today. And we sent them this report. You know, the last discussion had been, well, we've made repairs and now it's not leaking. And so, we said, all right, well, we'll see. And now we see that it is, it's definitely leaking again and their, the repair is not going to do it. So, that's where we are right now. So, we're not asking for any action tonight. We have, we have sent them from your attorneys a formal demand that they replace the roof. And if that is not fruitful, then we will come back with more specifics about our next steps.
Okay. And I appreciate you saying the suspense was two weeks. And this is the fourth, so we're talking about, about the eighteenth. We would be able to discuss this at our work session on, on the twenty-fifth, at least find out at that work session whether or not they responded favorably or, and then, I guess, the next question would be, two questions. How long will it take to repair the roof once an agreement is in place? Because if you're saying it's leaking there and leaking worse, are we having any further damage or any, any further, you know, equipment that is being exposed to a leaking roof?
To that, I guess the question would be, for convenience sake, if we were to repair before there's something, would that effect be an argument of something?
So, my first question is, no, I don't think so. But my second question is, that's probably something better addressed. To the extent we get to the point of filing litigation, we would usually discuss that close. But I, I don't think that, and my understanding is that's not been, it's, it's not a situation where like computers are shorting out or anything. But you can, they're just, it's, they're having to contain.
But I thought there was equipment that had been exposed to...
We've, we've incurred some expenses and we've kept track of all that.
Okay.
There were some band uniforms that got sewed up, molded, and sheet rock that we had to repair, things like that. But we've kept track of all of that.
And, and it's important to keep track, but it is, I think, more important to have the utility of that area. In other words, to be able to use the area. So, the, the idea of, you know, do we need to step up and take care of it first and resolve it through litigation? Because if we don't, we are continuing to suffer or we are continuing not to have the use of that space and that equipment.
Particularly when you say that magic wears them off. That was my concern because it's more than giving in.
Right.
We're, we're paying through the hill now to try to fix that situation. That's what my concern about, how long would we have to wait before we could actually repair this, so that it wouldn't affect any kind of the galloping coming up?
So, it sounds like we have some questions that perhaps we can try to shoot for the work session to answer.
Well, at the end, thank you, gentlemen. Dr. Winburn, will you share with us our most recent updated field trip approval, please?
Yes, ma'am.
This is for action.
Tonight, we are bringing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight new field trips that are either overnight or out of state for your approval. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Well, the question I have, thanks for recognizing, listen, Chair. I, I looked at this and I see the different places and overnight and some that are not overnight. But I tell you, as a board member, I feel totally inadequate to make an informed decision on these field trips. I'm really ready to put a motion on the floor to defer to the superintendent or the staff to determine this. I don't know whether or not there's a policy that the board has to approve this, but I think if we went around and asked each board member, they would be hard-pressed to give you any salient information about these field trips. So, it's almost something on the agenda that you could just report that we have X number of field trips and we could press on as opposed to asking the board to vote on something that we know very little about.
But don't we vote on it because of the legal responsibility? It falls back to the school system, it falls back on the board?
Yes. We do. And what I'll add to that is, Dr. Winburn and, at least then, I say it's team, but it really is still with them, they tried to go through these with a fine-tooth comb before they get on this list. And they call back to the schools, then something's missing or there isn't something clear. So, that when you get them here, you are able to have a bit of assurance that they've been reviewed in detail.
And then made legally as well.
So, your policy does not require board approval, at least the, the policy that's currently on the website. But I, I seem to recall that there was last year some discussion where the board wanted to see them.
We approved that amendment to the policy.
There was an amendment.
Maybe it just has something to upload.
Because the question was, we have responsibility, we should know where they're going and what they're doing. And I think the whole way you redid your process was to assure us that you had gone through all of that to make sure it was all covered.
Yeah. I recall that there was some request to have the board involved in that.
I agree with Mr. Mills. I mean, it's, we're, we are voting on something of which we are totally ignorant. I mean, there's, there's no way we're going to be able to understand the ins and outs of these field trips, nor do I think it's, I agree with Mr. Mills, I don't think it's appropriate expenditure of our time. I, I trust Dr. McLean and I trust Dr. Winburn to, I mean, we have to at some point delegate as a board, we have to delegate responsibilities to our staff who, and we either trust them or we don't. But, but certainly, I, I feel inadequate to say, well, this is a good idea, a bad idea, whether it's safe or not.
Well, I, I would, I wouldn't mind, you know, you can put it in the board packet and I can take a look at it. If I have a question, then I'll raise a question. But to require the board to vote on it, I really can't tell you what expertise. And I don't know the last time a board member has really questioned anything about it. So, certainly not something that raises a whole lot of questions from the board.
I guess it was double ensures. It protected the superintendent and it protected the board because they both were in agreement that this is all right to do in case something did come up. Seemed like we got the superintendent in hot water, the board had approved it a couple of years ago. But I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that was the reason that we talked about, of having it that way, that we'd be on the same sheet of paper. That's why I was looking at such strenuously. And, and my point was always the legality of it to protect us that way.
And Mr. Mills, you had said included in the board packet, what are you saying included?
Well, I mean, you could, you know, put a, you could put the information, hey, here is the list of field trips that are upcoming. And if I wanted to ask a question, I would.
They are in my, in my...
Oh, yeah. I looked at, I, I looked at them, but I couldn't tell you anything about, you know, more than what you have on the sheet. I haven't contacted, you know, DC or San Diego or whatever. I looked at where, where some of them, I see some of them on airplane and activity bus and charlotte buses and things like that. I certainly read my board packet, but I'm no more informed about it.
We didn't do, I mean, I wasn't on the board, but we didn't do this until last year. I mean, for what, a hundred years we've not been doing this?
Only overnight and out of state.
Yeah. So, I remember when I first came on the board, Gus, I don't know what the threshold was, but Gus would bring some things to the board. And I think it was either overnight or out of town.
The ones that he brought were overnight and out of the country. And we scrutinized those that went to the countries to make sure that there was no, they were not going into any war territories, which one we decided for them not to go, but they went anyway. And I think that's when they had the bombing at the airport. So, they were supposed to have been there, but they hadn't come there. So, it turned into a private field trip more than a school sponsorship. And that's why I said they went anyway. But even then, we were still responsible. So, that's when we kind of come up with this, that we just look at, you know, have someone look at all of them. But he would only bring those to us that had a overnight or, like I said, something that were going out of country and might be a danger to them.
Okay. So, this is an action item. What is the pleasure of the board? And, and Mr. Mills, do you want to make a, a motion contrary to what we are doing in practice now?
I, I'll go with the will of the board. No, I won't make a motion. Maybe, I don't know. I guess...
We're going to see.
That's right. We're going to feel that way.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. A second?
Good.
All right. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you. Dr. McLean, fiscal responsibility?
Yes. Tonight, we have a few different topics in the area of finance to bring your way. Ms. Beth Day had a death in the family and she is unable to be with us tonight. So, she is at the wake this evening and will be at the memorial family services on tomorrow. So, Dr. Winburn and myself, as well as the finance committee, will do the very best we can to answer some questions you may have. But we're going to start her typical, her very typical areas, the budget amendment. Dr. Winburn?
Yes, ma'am. So, I'll do my best. I've taken a lot of notes and gone through this with Ms. Day. There are two budget amendments tonight. The first is in the local fund, and this is a change to adjust the budget within the existing superintendent's budget for meet and greet and state of the school. It's the amount of five hundred dollars. And then we also have other restricted fund. And this is to adjust the budget for recycling revenue that was received for one thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars. So, those are the only two budget amendments at this time, and this is an action item.
I believe that the budget amendments be approved as we say. Okay? Second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, we will have the typical financial update and board travel.
First, under financial update, we are, let's talk, we are now fifty-nine percent of the way through the year as of one thirty-one nineteen. way through the year as of 1/31/19. All expenditures are within budget and all percentages are, uh, under 59%. With regard to board travel, the, these expenditures are as of 1/31/19. Something that may be a little confusing is you know, some of these dates are after the 31st of January, but that is when the event will occur, the money has already been spent and allocated. So, this is the remaining balance, um, or the expenditures and the remaining balance for board travel.
This is just for information. The report on investments and update on account is something new this evening. Ms. Day and her team have been working really hard to get us best rates and lawful investments with the cash management trust to increase the revenue, and this is a recommendation therefore reported to us tonight.
So, this is an action item. Ms. Day wanted me to let you know that there are, uh, two things to pay attention to here. One is a copy of a report for the local government commission. This is a semi-annual report, um, that is reflects as of December 31st, December 31st, 2018. And then there's also a memo, um, that is from Ms. Day, uh, to senior staff describing, um, how the finance committee supports the transfer of funds to a new account so that we may obtain a higher interest rate on our money while it is sitting in this account. Attached is also a profile sheet of this new account, but basically, this, this effort is to try to get us more money, is to save money and earn more on the money that we have.
If you recall, in your board packet Thursday night, there were three options there for you there, this is what was illustrating that. Mr. Smith, would you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I missed the financial meeting and Ms. Day was supposed to present it, but I knew you were there. And I was gonna ask you, um, of your opinion toward it, because I read it, I looked there, and the only thing hitting my mind, which I knew she probably already checked on, was the galloping. And if she has, because I'm saying, I'm gonna think that if that's what she wanted and you recommended it, that I would be full of flesh with it.
We, we discussed this at length in our budget finance committee meeting and she alluded to it Thursday night. She is, I, I believe, actually able to do this without us, but wanted to bring to us that what she wanted, and, and we thought that was a good idea, so I appreciate your support there. So, this is an action item, um, so how do we entertain a motion as to what the board wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I saw off of that motion and we would receive the proposal that Ms. Day has given.
Okay, can I give a second on that?
Second.
All right, any further questions about that as you've looked over? All right, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen. We have an audit contract this evening. This is the company that already does our audit for the year, and she's recommending to the board that we approve the contract with Anderson, Smith, and White P L L C to perform our 2019 audit of the district.
She also just made a, a note that the, uh, the fee is the same as it was last year, and we are still running, uh, much cheaper than many of our neighbors. Vance County pays $60,000 a year for theirs, Franklin County, $46,000, Wake County, $42,000.
Moving for approval of the audit contract. Okay, a second for that?
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, next, John, the typical budget update, please.
Ms. Day has, uh, given me a couple of instructions to read about this. As we discussed last Thursday, uh, the district budget committee has met two times, okay? Uh, just as a reminder, please make sure that you all do your homework, which she provided to you. And Mr. Smith, um, I don't, that was a hard copy.
I have a whole.
All right. And also, please note that March 25th is the next finance budget workshop, and she looks forward to going over all that with you then.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. And finally, for Ms. Day.
Mr. Menz, did you have a question?
Um, I'll, I'll let the superintendent go and then I'll ask.
Oh, no, no, I was gonna move on to the next.
Let me just ask, uh, we have the, the meeting coming up on the, the 25th. Is it possible that there's a fourth to get a list or to identify those items from our $26 million that have not been addressed? In other words, we spent five and there was another eight, we spent 15. I'm just trying to find out from that original $26 million list, what is still hanging out there? I'm not asking whether it's early or late or whatever, what is still hanging out there? Okay, and can I get it by the 23rd or 24th or something, before that 25th meeting?
Yes, sir.
That was my question. Thank you, Dr. Dr. McLean.
And gentlemen, with our information on Thursday night, something new, I'll just ask you not to forget, came before us tonight, and that was communities and schools. So, that is not, that is not currently included in the information we've done with the community group, nor with what you received. We now need to add that piece, that is a request for $40,000 that needs to go somewhere, just for consideration. All right, the update on the Creedmore Annex, Dr. Winborn and Ms. Dootson.
I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Dootson.
Um, sure. So, there has been, obviously, as, as you know, the school system staff have moved out of the Creedmore Annex and they're ready to look at disposing of that property. Um, I've not, we've not brought before you a resolution tonight because, um, I don't think that everything is in place yet, um, but it was, there was some desire to, for me to explain the process. So, the, um, the first thing by law that you were required to do is offer the property to the county commissioners at, what the statute says is fair market value or a price negotiated between the boards. There is some interest from the county, and so that conversation needs to happen first. And what, um, I've suggested to staff is that they determine what is a fair market price for that property. We have the tax assessment, which is fairly recent and a good start, um, and, you know, have some informal discussion to determine, you know, what price would be fair and also what price the, the commissioners may be willing to pay, and then come back to you with that information. If the commissioners are not, if we're not able to reach an agreement with the commissioners, then you can sell it either to, you can sell it to another local government entity directly, or if you're putting it on the market, then we would open it up for one of a variety of statutory bid processes. The one that I've recommended usually, uh, for this type of property is negotiated sale and then upset bids, where somebody makes you an offer, they give you a deposit, and then you advertise, does anyone want to make a better offer? And you do that as many times as you get better offers, and each, each offerer has to give you a deposit. So, um, but that's a little ways down the road because first you have to negotiate with the county commissioners.
Any questions for the attorney?
How, how? How quickly can this happen? How quickly can we dispose this property and get the revenue?
Um, as soon, I mean, it just depends on how long it takes the two government bodies to determine whether they can reach an agreement or not, which really depends on their administrations going back and forth to determine and then bringing you.
Is that scheduled? Do we have a, and who does that? Is that, uh, is that the board? Is that Dr. McLean?
Dr. McLean and the, uh, county manager would have discussion and then, um, bring, you know, bring it back to either board. Both boards would have to then approve whatever deal or make a different deal.
Mr. Menz?
Yes. Since we have a, a session scheduled for March 25th, I would like to see that discussion happen immediately. I mean, hasn't that building been vacant since December? They're about the end of the year? I mean, you know, we're ending the first quarter. We need to expedite this. Uh, the, the fact is, we have an asset that is doing us, that is of no value to us right now, and it's current condition, and we can use the funds. So, uh, be ready to tell us what the county manager said at the March 25th work session as far as the intent of the, the gally, and if they're willing to, you know, if they have an offer, that they're willing to make. Because we're in the midst of budget season, the funds that we can obtain from the disposal of that certainly should be able to help us with our budget going forward.
Any further information?
Actually, I believe where we are right now is trying to determine fair market value. That's been the question mark. We have the tax value, but what is the fair market value? And I think it was right there.
So, now, who's going to determine that?
I think our attorneys will help us with what we learned out there. We'll certainly.
Does the board have any input into approving?
If we wait until the 25th, we can share with you what we've discovered and learned and go from there.
But yes, the answer is yes. No, no deal could be made without, without you.
That's right.
Add 20% to the fair market value.
Is that how I knew I would get all this?
Fair market value. Never.
Well, I, I guess, I, I look at this as another question. In this, along this line, but not specific to the annex, what is the normal procedure or process, uh, as far as timeline, when you are disposing of, uh, property? I mean, we, we, this evening, we're, we're talking about Tola, uh, we, we have, uh, I'm not sure what we're going to do at, at Mary Potter, but the fact of the matter is, you know, how soon can you put a resale sign out there?
So, um, it depends on the property. So, for the annex, which is an office building, it is already empty. Um, it's something where there actually may be commissioner interest in that, so you have to go through that discussion first. Um, for something like Tola, let's say the county has no interest and they make that clear front. I have no idea if they do or not, so let's assume they don't. Um, in that case, sometimes we can do it all in one fell swoop, where the board can say, we declared this surplus, we instruct the superintendent to offer it to the county, the county's already told us they don't want it. So, therefore, we then instruct the superintendent to, to sell it using this method. And, um, and it can happen that quickly. And then the upset bid process, um, so, so then you put it on the market. If you get an offer, you advertise a, you know, they, they have to give you a deposit and then you advertise upset, for upset bids, I think for 10 days. Um, if you get none, then you're done. We have seen people go several rounds of upset bids, which takes a while, but also means that they got a lot more for that property than they thought they were going to, so.
You, you, you can't just, um, sell like commercial property. You get a commercial realtor to market it and offer it and, and get the best price they can get for it, payment commission and?
You, no. Well, I mean, you can, and, but just then, again, you have to either go through this upset bid process or you can auction it.
But you can't just get 21 to go out there and try to sell it at the best price for us.
Not for a property above a certain value, which something like a school building would. It has to be this more public sort of process. But, you know, there are some aspects of that process you may want to use, such as an appraisal. You know, something like the annex is not, it's not a high valued property, you know, as we think of commercial real estate. But a school building where it may be really unclear what a fair market value is, you may need an appraisal.
Tola would be complicated, it's got the waste treatment plan. We don't know, it could be environmental issues that we still, we could have other surprises that we aren't going to be happy with.
The one thing that you can't do, and I just want to say this because it often comes up with school buildings, um, you can't give it away. It either has to be continued to use for school system purposes, or you need to get value for it because it's taxpayer property.
Attorney Dootson, I do know Ms. Day made it very clear to us, because of our insurances, we can't let things just sit either. We have to, as long as we're unbound, we have to maintain the definition of what is maintaining the simple things like at least cutting the grass and making sure the building is secured and what have you.
Attorney Dootson, you said you can't give it away. There's no set clause either about the amount that you could sell to someone for either of it?
Well, so, you can't, you need to get something that you can reasonably argue is the value of the property. Now, sometimes that value isn't just cash. If there is, if, like, for instance, if sometimes a property will be sold, um, maybe an empty lot next to a school is sold to a recreational organization with the proviso that the school system can use those ball fields, then you're getting value that's not just cash, and, and so you can take less than market value for that property because you're receiving some, you're continuing to have some use of it for educational, or it's benefiting you. But it's, it's a constitutional provision that has to do with not, basically not giving away taxpayer resources. But it, it does come up a lot with schools because communities would like to have that building.
So, gentlemen, for this.
You can lease it.
I'm sorry, Attorney Dootson. For the sake of clarification, we will revisit the update on the Creedmore Annex, March 25th. Is that your question?
You will, you, not, when you say revisit, you will have had a discussion with the county manager.
We will hopefully have the fair market value, and if we get that in time, before the 25th, I certainly will move right along.
Well, okay, and I, I guess it would also be good if you get a confirmation from the county manager that the county is interested, because if they're saying, no, we're not interested, that will allow the board to.
I think that has been, that has been established.
The question is just, can we agree on price?
They are, they are interested. Yes, good question.
Any other discussion on the Creedmore Annex? I think we'll move to communication and community.
Thank you, Mr. March Chair. We have a board policy for this evening. Dr. Winborn, would you like to brief us on that, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, this is policy 5210, distribution of non-school materials, and this just has some very minor updates regarding who would act on behalf of, uh, the district in reviewing and making decisions about, um, materials. So, um, these were part of the recommended changes from School Board Association.
So, this is for information because it's a first read?
That's correct.
Yes, Mr. Udi?
Brad, the only thing that I've seen changed is the work principles. I'd like to make a motion that we waive the first read.
Okay, as we've done recently in the past? So, so your motion is to waive the second reading? Did I hear you?
Yes.
Did I hear you say second? Okay, for this reading, two thirds?
Yes, I was just doing the math method.
All right, so, uh, what Mr. Udi has made the motion for is that we raise, waive second reading. Now, we are just voting on that principle right now, and then after that, we'll go back to approve it, if, if that's what you want to do. So, the motion to waive the second reading, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the revisions of this.
Okay, second, second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, on our agenda, we removed 13.2, so we'll move to calendar revisions.
Yes, sir. So, uh, we, before you have two calendars, um, both are for next academic year. The traditional calendar had already been approved by the board, but I'm presenting this with a minor change. First of all, you'll notice that these are on a different format, so they look a little cleaner, a little nicer, easier to read. But the thing that's different about this calendar is that somehow, all the people that proofread this and the committee that voted on it, we had Thanksgiving on the wrong week. So, we had Thanksgiving here, but it should have been here. So, I'm just asking that that be amended. It's amazing, so many people. But the second one is the year-round calendar. And this is now, this draft here is the result of the calendar committee with the input from all four principals that have year-round calendars at their school. We also invited parents to attend in one-member piece, member of the committee, but wasn't able to make the last one. But the nice thing about this is that it fits nicely on top of our traditional calendars so that almost all of the important dates align, especially with regard to workdays and professional development and that sort of thing. So, a lot of effort went into making sure these match up.
All right, board, this is a motion item. What's your pleasure?
I move to pass the calendar.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All right, I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session according with NC general statute 143.318.1186, 143.318.1183, 143.318.1185, and section 115C 321 for personnel. Attorney Clark, approve each. I have a motion for that? Second, all those in favor say aye. We'll take a 10-minute break. You ready, Kim?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Peddocks? All right, we're back in open session now. I would entertain a motion to approve the certified and classified personnel exhibits that were given in closed session.
Motion, second.
All those in, are any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Before we move into our last announcements, Mr. Udi, you said you had some...
I just want to stress to you how important it is to attend the Pig in the Raffle with the Grand Ole Air Foundation. They give us a lot of money every year. So, this year, the event's going to be on May 3rd. You can go ahead and write that on your calendar. The tickets are $50 apiece. And I didn't have a location or time yet, but I will bring that. But it's very important that the board members participate in it, so they look forward to it. The second thing is these celebrations is going to be held on March 28th at 6:00 p.m. at JFW. And this goes into my third one. I'd like to ask Ms. Deversen if her business would sponsor us again this year, if you will check on that.
I want to take it from starters.
I know we usually have, the board usually has one team, so if anyone would like to participate, it's fun. And all you do is sit down and go like, I don't know. Dr. McLean and them is going to misspell it, so let us get it right.
I'm clearly going to get out early.
Is this March 16th then?
March 28th.
Oh, 20th.
At 6:00 p.m. at JFW. And the theme this year is March Madness, so I guess everybody will dress up as they are. Do you, Carolina, whatever, I don't own anything, but... The last thing is, I wanted to ask if you two had time to talk about the tutoring at Mount Energy for the teachers after school at the last meeting?
I was having a night. I've talked with Mary Ann, but we've not talked.
I just have a parent that called me back and asked us to...
I'm going to ask the same question. Okay, any further? Mr. Rivers, did you want to bring this in?
Yes, on the budget, just for planning for Dr. McLean and his staff, the, I am very strongly believe that since we have taken the very difficult decision to close schools, that we really need to honor our fund balance. And therefore, I would request that if we have not already, and I know part of the homework was to do that, but since that, we would be voting on money well in excess of what I'd be comfortable going in fund balance. I would like to request that Ms. Day, at some point, can, whichever board members would like to do this, go over our actual 18, 19 budget, line by line, to explain to us everything we spend. I don't care about the revenues, we know where that comes from. But basically, we know we get around $76 million from state, local, and federal. And we somehow got to figure out a priority because the 1.2 million that you requested, I just don't think you're going to have the votes to get that from talking to board members. So, I think we're going to need to understand that that probably won't happen. And therefore, we're going to have to prioritize exactly what the most critical needs are and try to keep that within, say, the 257,000 that we did not, we were not able to save. So, I just wanted to give you some heads up. I didn't want to bring this up on March 25th. And, you know, at that point, but I think, I think the board members need to understand where we spend our money. And we also, and also, I'd like to get my information about how much it costs per school. I think that's going to be critical, especially in the dual thrust of having to close more schools and trying to craft a budget. But I would very much appreciate your consideration of those requests.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The 1.2 million we gave you, gentlemen, on Thursday evening is one-time money. Those are not typical operational costs. It's one-time money before we go to commissioners with the fund balance at the rate we have it. So, it's not going to even go back to again. It's one time, a group of one-time needs in the county. The budget consists of operational dollars for the district. So, two very different issues. Both will be separate agenda items because they are.
Right, but I think it's, what I would like to be able to understand, and we have not gotten in, I brought the, I brought all the handouts that Ms. Day has given us, you know, that I've gotten over the past six months. And we always get told where our revenue comes from, but we don't get told where we spend our money. And we're going to have to carve out, we're going to have to cut. We're going to have to cut some things, and there's probably some painful cuts, but we're going to have to cut if we need to, for instance, you know, there are priorities like perhaps more social workers. If we want to do something like that, we're going to have to cut somewhere else. And I think we're going to have to come up with priorities. And once we hit the magic 76 million or wherever it turns out to be within our give or take, then the priorities are going to have to go with what we got and not. But I just, I don't, in my good conscience, I can't justify that we close the school like Tola and then we're going to spend, you know, even if it's a one-time expense, next year, there's one-time expenses, and the year after, there's a roof that collapses, or there's this, or there's that. There always will be one-time expenses. There always will be. And so, I liken that as, if it goes into fund balance, then either the fund balance is important, which I was led to believe it was, or it's not important. And if it's important, then we made a commitment to the county and we took some drastic steps. I just can't see us now going down to 4 million in fund balance. And we didn't keep Tola open for another year, but we spent another 2 million. I just, I just don't think we can do that to the community. I just don't think it's fair.
Can I ask a question as the budget of finance chair? My question would be is, I need to know how to prioritize the time of my committee to, what are we supposed to go find out if individual board members are going to do that? And are we going to, out of the state, bring us a budget where individual board members pick line items that they pull out of the budget arbitrarily?
No, I don't think so. I just think, I mean, if... Those board members who are interested, I think, and have the time to do it, need to be aware of what's, and I appreciate what you're doing. If you, Ms. Day's going to sit down with you and I guess now with Mr. Smith...
Sorry, Mr. Smith.
Maybe someone else. But, you know, if, somehow, I mean, somehow, we need to know, if we're going to vote on a budget, if I'm going to vote on a budget, and we're going to cut, we're going to cut things to keep it going in fund balance, then I need to know what it is we're spending our money on. For instance, meals. Now, I mean, how much are the meals? Do we need meals at 5 o'clock? This is me at 6 o'clock for a work session, and skip the meals. How much does that save? Mr. Udi said he had that information a year or so ago. It seems like a minor thing, but if you, if we are as critically, if our finances are as critical as I believe they are, then, you know, you just take care of the pennies and nickels and the dollars take care of themselves. And we're going to have to set an example, and we're going to, we're going to have to cut. We're going to have to find out what we can cut and what we need to do to serve these children. But I don't know to answer your question. I would just like to see a copy of the budget. I mean, I'd like to, and I can just maybe do it by myself and just go through and see what we're doing. I'm sure it's all legitimate, but in my mind, I have to come up with priorities. And you're going to have to come up with priorities and suggest to the board, and we're going to probably debate. And because I, quite frankly, I really believe we need more social workers. That's going to cost more money than we don't have. So, if I want more social workers, me, Rob Rivers, one board member, and that's important to me, and Danny Udi wants more SROs because you only have nine. And he thinks that's, we're going to have to give and take and discuss, and then vote as a board, and the majority is going to rule. So, your work is very important because we don't all have the time to do what you're going to do. But somehow, we also need to know more than we know now about where we spend our money.
I guess my one...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, absolutely. I just guess my one concern is, is we have some 9,000 line items. At what point do we go line by line and decide if the boardroom picks this and this side of the boardroom doesn't? And, I mean, I...
Well, I don't know that we need to go over the 9,000 line items. But for instance, you know, what do we spend on textbooks? What do we, computers? Wade County on the tour that Dr. Meyer took me on Monday before last, they don't do, they do not do one-to-one computers. We do, and we spend a lot of money on that. Is that something that we need to think about as a board? And with Dr. McLean's and her staff's input? If we can hire more teachers by not doing one-to-one computers, is that something we need to think about? But then, do we spend more on textbooks because we don't have the computers? So, it makes it a wash. So, somehow, the board, I don't feel like I'm doing my fiduciary responsibility because I don't know enough about the budget. And I don't want to be in the finest committee, you don't get me wrong.
I was curious, though, we got a bad spot.
And perhaps we may have to do something. But the point is, I just want to know how we spend our money. You can jump in anytime, Mr. Mills, or Mr. Udi, or Mr. Smith. I mean, it's, I may be on full hot air, but I...
Well, the only thing I would add to that, that's why we need to know what we might be able to squeeze out of that annex building as soon as possible. That could help us to fray something, you know? I mean, you said 257, if that was the tax value on it and so forth, that could sort of bring us back to zero. But, and it will be important to know how quickly you could put a for sale sign or we can divest ourselves of the, any facilities, Tola in particular. I mean, we don't want to be paying utilities on something that we're not using. Cutting the grass is one thing, but having to pay utilities is something totally different. And so, we need the budget committed to, to come in and tell us, and not 9,000 items, but definitely the high dollar value. Where are we spending the biggest bucks that mean something? The board needs to be aware of that.
So, a request has been made. That's the best way to fulfill that request and take that to Ms. Day.
I think we need Ms. Day to come back to the girl with more than the charts because she's already provided percentage amounts where the budget goes of that 91 million. And she didn't break them down, but I think it was something like 90% in salaries and 16% off to charters and remember those? She's given us percentages of those dollar amounts, but I'm hearing we want more.
Absolutely.
I'd like to also add, what you don't know is, you described the process. You're about three steps ahead of all the steps we take the board through. Right now, you're just prioritizing if we're going to, one, remain competitive because that issue is still on the table, and pay bills, and make sure we're not depleting our fund balance. This board sort of will juggle with all of that. And you're right, you all will go back and forth and so forth and so on. But that's probably about two more steps away, so...
Well, I just want to give you some heads up because I just, I didn't want you to come in here on the 25th thinking that it is going to be smooth sailing to go 1.2 million in fund balance.
Budget's never smooth sailing, but I appreciate the heads up. And I think we can get with Ms. Day and ask her for some more in-depth information, more than she's provided thus far, because you gentlemen don't even have the dollar amounts. Mr. Mills, I think, asked me, how can I do this without the dollar amounts first? Remember, we sort of went there? So, what you're doing is prioritizing what you'd like to see. You don't even, you haven't even played with dollar amounts yet. So, that's coming around next. So, I just ask you to come, go with us, and I promise you, this flower will unfold. And we will have some pretty hard decisions to make. But if we don't take time to go through it, what we don't want is everyone to get to the end and not know how we got there.
Right, absolutely.
So, we will go through it together. That's right. And so, we promise, we will bring you even more on the way. We will hear from you. You all will do a little debating. We'll have a facilitator for you. We will, we'll get through it. We will.
So, perhaps we could get that information before the 25th so we could actually have time to look, time to look at it.
Well, if you bring me your homework, what we will do on the 25th will be very instrumental, not in isolation, because it will be very public altogether. I promise, it'll be worthwhile.
All right, Dr. Meyer asked me to remind you, we are still needing members to be a part of appeals hearing on Wednesday. So, if you are available for that, if you can let him know that either after tonight or first thing in the morning. Mr. Smith, the attorney, inform me that we need you to make your announcement, if you don't mind, in open session.
Sure. I relinquish my position as Grand Ole Air Education Number. The fact that tonight, simple reason, workload allows me to miss meetings during the day that I feel like I should be a part of. So, at this time, I figure that the best interest of the county and I to resign from my position.
And again, as we said in closed session, we appreciate your service, sir.
We do, we do, all of us do. It's been a pleasure working with you, Mr. Smith.
I can say with that.
Likewise. Will you roll around?
And board members, I'll talk to the chair, and I'll talk to the chair and vice chair, and I assume we'll bring something back at the next meeting about a process for appointing a new member.
All right, you see there on your agenda, there are dates to remember. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything to say about that?
Absolutely. These are actually not the dates to remember right away. So, a few gentlemen will pass these around the table for me. We have a few more urgent dates we'd like to get on your radar if they are possible. We have March 13th through 14th, we'll be graduating from the Next Generation Superintendent Award. Staff will be in the district. On March 14th, we invite you to our spelling bee at Tar River that evening at 6:30. On March 25th, financial workshop, that is with our board. If you'll mark your calendar, we will have dinner at 5:00, and we will begin again at 5:30. We'll do that right here. Elementary Battle of the Books at Northern Grandville Middle, that is an all-day event. Please come out at 8:30 to 2:30, just to drop your head in, pluck your head in. April 8th, we will have an Equity Luncheon Learn. That is really big right now across the state, especially with ESSA and with our Title I, so the topic of equity. And we've asked you to put a hold, there are a few more here, but we've asked you to put a hold on June 19th through 20th. I believe the invite just indicated the 20th, but we the other night asked you to put a hold on the 19th and 20th for me, please. We will do some more, and I'll be seeking your input on one or two sessions for that. But we will also get you in the resilience and restore to justice piece, just a little bit. Spring breaks are here, just so if you see children crawl over town and people start asking you questions, you can open the children around. So, we put them there for you.
See, one day, if you elected?
One day, yeah.
March 30th, and that's the first responders training.
Oh, Saturday, yes.
Be training our teams at our schools about how to respond to crises, first day of trauma. That's what we're...
And Dr. Winburne, thank you for that because all board members are invited. That is a Saturday morning and it will be held at Northern Bramble Middle School this year. Thank you.
All right, anything else for anybody? I would like for you to take a look at the clock. Tell him it can be done. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It will happen again.
Mr. Smith.
Same move.
Second. Y'all just hanging it out?
I was going to let Mr. Smith do it, but make his last second.
They're just messing with you.
All right, the meeting is adjourned, have a great evening, thank you for your work tonight.
All the way.